Council meeting of August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one is called to order. And we'll stand for the pledge allegiance and we'll have Jeff Knight lead us tonight.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. How about a roll call, Donna?
Okay. Councilmember Nesko?
Here.
Mayor Dorsey?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Bode?
Here.
Councilmember McDowell?
Present.
And Councilmember Feis is absent tonight. Mayor.
I move to excuse Councilmember Feis from tonight's meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Megan Feis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion granted. All right. Council members, have any late changes to our agenda tonight? No? We'll move on to council member reports. Anyone have one?
Go for it.
Joe does.
Hey, thank you very much. Actually, last Friday, I got invited from Councilmember Nesko and Commissioner Judy. We toured a couple of housing developments in Olympia that were constructed and managed by the Low Income Housing Institute, also known as LEHI. So if you ever hear that acronym, that's what that stands for. But they showed us the tiny home village. They also showed us the new construction on Martin Way and Patterson, as well as the Billy Frank Jr. on downtown Olympia there. And talked about, you know, from soup to nuts, kind of how they got those projects off the ground. While we all are struggling with the housing situation in every city, all of the same things that come up in, you know, support and opposition, all the same sorts of things were, you know, discussed and dealt with that, you know, we've been, we've been across. So it's kind of in a way reassuring to know that these problems aren't necessarily unique to Shelton, but that there's also opportunities that I think could work and could be good partnerships between the city, the county, and nonprofits in the future to help combat housing. And just wanted to express, I think those types of field trips are good and encourage others, if you're interested, to go check that out. Thanks for being with me.
Anyone else?
I didn't have quite a report, but more of a shout out to, gosh, I can't even start to name everybody. We just recently were working on some sewer and water taps and working with the city was phenomenal. Just the way that everybody stepped up and made things happen, even when there were, especially when there were problems, everybody was really right there and did an amazing job. So I wish I could go down the list, but there's just too many to name.
Great.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
The move, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our general public comment, where members of the public can provide comment on any topic at this time. And I also want to say that the public, if they're listening, can call Jeff Knighton or email Jeff Knighton, and those numbers are on the website. So, Donna, do we have anyone tonight?
I will go check while I do our thirty-second delay.
We'll do a thirty-second delay.
It could be way worse, buddy.
I actually was, I was actually gonna do the Jeopardy song, but as a commercial first.
Yeah, there you go.
Like, are there, like, copyright?
Yeah.
I'm sure there are, actually.
YouTube will be, yeah.
I've been wanting to do that for, like, half a year.
That's thirty seconds, and there's no one signed up.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are recessing from a regular meeting to an open public hearing, and we're gonna hear from Finance Director Aaron B. Miller. He's gonna share information about updating the Shelton Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Aaron B. Miller with the city's Finance Department. The ordinance before you is really just a clean-up ordinance of Shelton Municipal Code eight point zero eight. Back in two thousand and seventeen, the city contracted with Waste Connections for garbage services, and our code really hasn't been updated, so it's got very old language in there. It has rates back to two thousand and fifteen and all of that kind of stuff, container sizes. That's all now done by the contractor. So what we've done here is we've gone through and eliminated most of the code that no longer is relevant. The sections that are remaining, there's four sections, and, yes, and most of those sections were in the code originally. The only change really is what we have under section eight point zero eight oh two oh, Means of Providing Service, and it just says that per state law, we can contract this out and if the city so chooses to do so. I also want to say importantly, we have left the compulsory language in there that businesses and residents, it's compulsory that they use garbage services. One of the things that we're gonna be doing, and we'll talk about in the next business agenda item, is updating some administrative processes that we have with that to further delineate between that. But really what this allows is for the city to continue to have compulsory services. If those, the penalty phase of that, if someone is not doing that, would go through code enforcement. Currently, we use finance and we use kind of utility billing as that kind of stick, if you will. We're no longer gonna be doing that, so if there is not, if there is an issue, code enforcement would go and there is a penalty that, I think it's up to ninety days in jail and a thousand, up to a thousand dollar fine or both. So again, we're trying to separate out here a little bit, the city from the garbage contract and letting the contractor just handle the garbage process, the solid waste process. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let's go back to the penalty phase. So if they don't have garbage, they can go to jail?
That's a misdemeanor. That's basically the max penalty for a misdemeanor. One class, I'm not sure which one it is. I seriously doubt that that will ever happen over this particular issue, but it's, will be the same for any code enforcement issue regardless of, you know, whether it's lack of garbage or anything else.
So, so let me get, understand this. So if someone just decided they wanted to haul their own garbage to the garbage dump, and they'd never had any garbage to be picked up at their house, they would get fined?
It's because the city has a compulsory garbage service. You are required to have garbage service. There, there needs to be a method of enforcing that compulsory service.
Okay.
How long is our contract with them again?
Boy, I think it goes, it's several years.
Yeah.
Several years. Several years, yeah.
It was twenty, a twenty-year contract.
Yeah.
And what, two years, three years?
Seventeen, we started.
Yeah. And we still have the no water, no garbage clause. If they go to Arizona for the summer, for the winter, and they don't have water, then they don't have to pay for garbage.
That's correct. That's one of the things with us separating out and letting the contractor do that is it's gonna be easier for that kind of suspension, if you will, to happen.
Suspension if you want to turn your water service off.
Yes, if you're, if you're a snowburger.
Yeah.
All right. Has anyone signed up for public testimony here, Donna?
I will start the thirty-second delay.
Okay.
Go check. Mr. Mayor, in that thirty seconds.
All right. Thank you. In that case, can we have the first reading of ordinance number one nine seven three dash zero six two one?
Yes. Ordinance number one nine seven three dash zero six two one, and ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter eight point zero eight of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to solid waste collections.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that.
We have to forward this ordinance, I move that we forward this ordinance to the September seventh city council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any council members have any questions or comments for Mr. B. Miller?
I mean, are we, we're changing this to, is violation now, or is that later, the penalties?
The penalty is already in place.
Yeah.
So that nothing changes there.
To misdemeanor, though, we're changing that now?
Yeah, the language for the penalty is the exact same that's in code now as it, as it's continuing forward.
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
But it was coming from the accounting. Now it's going to code enforcement?
The collections part of it was going, was from, through the Finance and Accounting Department. Now we're transferring the enforcement of that to code enforcement, so our finance staff can work with numbers and do what they do rather than, you know, collections.
I mean, I'd like to see some kind of a scale before we change it to misdemeanor. I mean, is it, we go to the door, we, it's a warning, and then we go at the second time, and maybe it's a...
No, it's a, it's not a misdemeanor right off the bat. I can, I can share that with you for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think to Councilmember Nesko's point, while, you know, while it's written, it can be, you know, somebody willfully violates, disobeys, or neglects, or refuses to comply that we can essentially arrest them for it. I would think, you know, there's an education component, and there's all of that other stuff. However, because code enforcement is an issue in the city, I believe there needs to be some teeth behind, behind this. So I'm okay with the language being what it is, as long as we're going through it and, you know, educate first and all the other stuff, but...
That is the absolute last resort after going through the process with the court here, that, to be quite honest with you, I don't ever expect that to happen.
Yeah.
It has to be somebody that, you know, just absolutely refuses to do anything, and even then, you know, it's doubtful that we're going to house somebody in the county facility for, for that particular issue.
Correct. And it seems to me there was, you know, like a warning, and then another warning, and we'll work with you.
But where is that?
I think...
We're all not gonna be here one day. I mean, we could all be different people, and, I mean, where's, where's the scale and how we're gonna handle these?
So I think what we can do is add language here when we bring it back. There is, it's in chapter seven, and I can't remember the exact, but under code enforcement, it does detail out the steps the city must take. And so we could add that, you know, in accordance with X, Y, and Z, so we could, we could certainly do that.
Okay, that would make me more comfortable.
Okay.
I mean, there's future councils, future administrators and staff that could just say, oh, we're gonna go write a ticket.
Yeah, chapter, chapter seven of our code details that for all code enforcement activities, not just garbage service. But we can, yeah, we'll, we can add that language, and I'll send you that particular section so you can look it over.
So, a little more clear on this. So a person pays their garbage bill each month, but they choose to take their garbage to the garbage dump for some reason. That, as long as they're paying their garbage bill, that...
Yeah, as long as...
But when they refuse to pay their garbage bill, they're taking their garbage to the garbage dump or wherever.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not, that's right. Then that's, okay, I got it.
That's when the code enforcement process would start. And again, that starts with the education piece, you know. We have this, and then...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that's a good point. Director B. Miller brought it up. I'm looking at it right now. It starts, it prescribes A, B, step A, step B, step C. First is investigation, B is correction, notice of violation, goes through, you know, goes through the whole process. I think, you know, you just simply prescribe that.
Right.
That, that's, I think, gonna meet the need.
I think that will get us there.
I, I like the enforcement part. I've just never been a fan of this forced garbage service, 'cause I can take almost a dump trailer worth of my own personal garbage to the dump for twenty-four dollars. And what I have to pay for a garbage can that doesn't fit my garbage, 'cause I still take garbage to the dump every month, so it's, I'm not a fan of it, but I can't change that.
But it has to be, has to be done, because...
It, it does, but I agree, the enforcement part is there. If you're not taking your garbage away, you should, there should be enforcement, but I don't feel like you should be forced to have garbage service. But like I said, there's nothing I can do about that, so...
All right. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to forward this ordinance to the September seventh city council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
With new language.
With new language.
With new language.
With new language? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have another item from Aaron, a contract amendment with Waste Connections.
Thank you again. What is before you is the second amendment to the agreement between the city and our garbage collect, collection contract with Waste Connections. Back in two thousand and seventeen, July of two thousand and seventeen, I believe it was, the city signed a long-term contract with Waste Connections to provide garbage and recycling service to the city. Soon after that, I think it was even that next meeting in July, there was the first amendment that came through that included language on how delinquencies would be treated. And it has been, it's very convoluted, it's hard to manage through, and both the city Finance Department and utilities billing and Waste Connections have wanted to update it, and that's what this does. Really, what this does is it, again, provides further separation between how Waste Connections does their business and how the, and the response for delinquencies. And so after a period of time, let's see, I think it's after thirty days following an issuance notice of late payment, that would be issued by the garbage contractor, the contractor may suspend solid waste and recycle services to the customer. After ninety days then, the contractor can actually go and use their collection process in order to receive those payments. This is where the code really comes into play. So if they pull the cans and they suspend service because of non-payment, they go and they put them on, you know, they go to collections agencies and so on and so forth. If the garbage starts to pile up, that's where our code can step in and try to help mediate the matter between the code and them having the garbage service. Now how it works, if I can say it in a nutshell, the Waste Connection sends information to us. We add the late fees to their utility bill, and they keep billing for that service to that, so those, so that fee keeps on coming higher and higher. And then if someone does send a check, for instance, or goes to Waste Connections to make that payment, because of the process that we have, they're told, no, we can't take that payment anymore. You have to go to the city to make that payment. And so they come to the city and we pay it and hand it, and we take that and hand it over to Waste Connection. It's just, it's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts in there that we believe are unnecessary. And what this will do is, again, try to further define what steps that Waste Connections can take on delinquencies, and then again, based on our code, we have code enforcement should some, some garbage start to pile up. Both Waste Connections and the city are in favor of this amendment, and we think it will help smooth a lot of the, of an arduous process out for us. So that's what, that's what this amendment does. Again, it's more just on the administrative side of collections and, and delinquencies. And happy to answer any questions.
So before, if I'm not mistaken on how it worked, if you weren't, if you weren't paying your garbage bill, it came over, and if it accumulated too much, wouldn't we suspend water service?
We could, yes.
So we're removing that?
Yes, we are taking water service and garbage, garbage service and...
Perfect, 'cause that always felt pretty, pretty off as well to me, that we were, one, enforcers, and two, we're gonna suspend another service that is necessary. If garbage isn't necessary, 'cause you can remove your own, you're not bringing in your own pot of water, though.
Right. This, this, this takes those two, separates them.
I agree with James' comments. Also, the way it was working, wasn't it, and by the way, I agree with this ordinance, it was kind of messy.
Yeah.
But we were, they were canceling that account, transferring the whole balance over to the city, starting a new account, so...
It was dirty.
So is that still going on?
No, thi, this will also fix that. That account is the Waste Connections account, and it doesn't have anything. How Waste Connections wants to handle that is on them, but the city is not part of that process.
No, that's coming back to the city.
That's right.
The past due balances, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd make things a lot cleaner, more efficient, and a lot less confusing for the customer.
Oh.
Yeah, and we think it, Waste Connections and us both think it's a better way to do things.
Cool.
So we're officially out of the garbage business?
That's correct.
Well, sort of.
Just a quick question. Because it's a compulsory service, that means that even if there's delinquency on the account, it doesn't mean that their garbage does not get picked up, correct?
It, so what this does is it transfers, they can pull the cans and go through their process to, to get the delinquent payments and, and go through collections. While they're in that process, they let us know. They say, we've pulled cans from one, two, three, you know, Cota Street. And we then can know that we need to start paying attention, and code enforcement can keep an eye on to see what's happening on that end. It's still a compulsory service, and so we still have that code enforcement penalty phase, but we're giving it time, I guess you would say, to let Waste Connections go through their process. And if need be, we would go through the code enforcement process on our side.
But they're, they're in violation the minute the garbage can gets picked up?
Yes.
Technically.
Not when the garbage piles up, but the garbage can is gone, they're in violation.
Technically.
But we would, we would code enforce on somebody who just wasn't paying their bill, or only on somebody who's piling up garbage?
No, well, we would code enforce on someone who's not following the compulsory, the compulsory garbage requirement.
And before we sold our solid waste, we, was still compulsory?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that language was in the contract for the garbage service?
Yes.
So, yeah.
And I think this has been clarified, I'm gonna ask it one more time, but just so it's clear, this is not, so if, if somebody goes and arrears, Waste Connections shuts off their account, now they're in violation, 'cause, 'cause Waste Connections is not gonna pick up the garbage, and they do not have garbage service.
Mm-hmm.
And Waste Connection fees them a twenty-one dollar, twenty-five dollar account, you know, re-establishment fee, plus, plus this, plus that. I just want to make sure we're not, like, double, you know, doubling down on somebody who falls and arrears on their account for a month or something like that.
That's where the progressive part of chapter seven starts. That's, you know, we talk to the people, we'll even, you know, our code enforcement officer, our current one, Shannon, goes out and she has the vouchers that she gives, you know, to help people in those situations. We are not, nor will we ever, look to be, look to penalize right off the bat. It's help, educate, you know, we will do everything we can to help you get to where it, the service needs to be.
We'll pause for thirty seconds, see if anyone signed up for public testimony?
Let's throw all the answers, Aaron.
Hey, Donna, you're getting faster at this. All right. So do we have a motion?
I move that we forward this amendment to the September seventh city council meeting for further discussion, consideration.
Second.
All right. I think we've done our comments and questions, right?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second to forward this amendment to the September seventh city council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Now, if you want to wipe, yeah, okay. Wipe that down.
Donna reminded me, Mayor reminded me, I'll, what are these days I'll remember?
Next, we're gonna have Police Chief Carol Beeson with details about a surplus, surplusing police vehicles.
Good evening, Mayor Dorsey, Deputy Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm here to request a surplus of three police vehicles that have far exceeded their shelf life as police vehicles. The three vehicles in question are all Ford Crown Victorias from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight. Ford no longer makes the Crown Victorias anymore, so we're having a hard time finding parts to maintain these vehicles. It's become a lot more costly to keep them, and because of the amount of miles that we put on these cars, after a while, they're just not as safe to drive. So we'd like to surplus these three vehicles. Two of them are still operable, the third one had been in an accident, and we've been using it more as a training tool, so that one will have to be, you laugh, but you'd be amazed what you can use a spare car for. The third one would just be scrap metal at this point. We estimate conservatively, we'd probably get about twenty-one hundred dollars for the three vehicles.
Total?
Total.
Yeah. All right, so we need to pause for thirty seconds. And while Donna makes her trip to the...
And it's gonna be fast, 'cause Mr. Ziegler's out there watching the car.
Will we surplus, do we send them to auction?
We send all surplus vehicles to, I'll, I'll answer him.
Okay.
No public, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So can I get a motion, please?
I move that we forward this resolution to the September seventh city council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right, any questions for Ms. Beeson?
Councilmember Bode had asked a question about the surplus process.
Yeah.
So surplus, we take all our vehicles to Tumwater for the state surplus. Basically, they sell them for us. It makes it very convenient. We don't have to dedicate an employee to talk to prospective buyers or anything like that, and we get roughly the same amount we would otherwise.
Awesome. They just charge a buyer's premium or something?
Yeah.
And, and could we get more for these? I think it's kind of cheap for a two thousand and six and two thousand and eight Crown Victoria.
But you gotta understand that police officers don't drive their vehicles like normal people do. You know, they spend twelve-hour shifts driving those cars around, and so they get a lot more wear and tear on them than normal people put on their cars.
And if I remember correctly, all three of these have been retired once from other police departments around the state of Washington.
It's entirely possible that they are new to us cars.
Time to send them to the boneyard.
We have a motion and a second to forward this resolution to the September seventh city council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, girl.
All right, so our last business item is a resolution to approve city inclusion with Mason County in a comprehensive solid waste management plan. Jeff Knighton will have the details for us tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Tonight, before you, we have a, basically an addition to something we've been doing for quite some time. RC, RCWA seventy-eight dot two oh five requires each county within the state to prepare a comprehensive solid waste management plan. I will not try to pronounce the acronym. In two thousand and six, the City of Shelton commissioned, at that time, passed a resolution that authorized Mason County to include the City of Shelton in its comprehensive waste management plan. Each county is required to periodically update the plan and receive approval from any joint municipality...
joint municipalities prior to the submission to the Department of Ecology. Uh, in 2018, uh, the city council, in October of 2018, the city council authorized the Public Works Director to sign a letter of concurrence approving the updated, uh, comprehensive waste management plan. And, uh, early this month, the city staff received a notice from Mason County, uh, that , uh, new legislation requires local jurisdictions to adopt a contamination reduction and outreach plan, uh, as part of their comprehensive solid waste management plan. That is included as Appendix J in your packet. And this resolution, uh, provides the council's approval for myself to sign the letter of concurrence on the city's behalf. Uh, this valuable partnership with Mason County, uh, not only saves the city valuable staff time, uh, but also avoids, uh, duplicate efforts with the county. And I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Let's pause 30 seconds for a public comment.
So can I ask a question?
Following the public comment.
Yeah, after public comment and after motion.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
I move to forward Resolution Number 1206 dash 0821 to September seventh council meeting, council meeting action agenda for further consideration. Second.
All right. At this time, I'd like to ask the council members to ask questions or comments.
So does this, um, does this tie in with, uh, the, the transfer station, the garbage so?
Yeah.
Would it be upkeep, upgrades, re, making it bigger?
Not so much making it bigger, it's just a, a plan in place to reduce. A lot of that has to do with the recycling program.
Okay.
Uh, so you reduce what's actually going into the landfill or attempt as best you can to reduce the amount of waste going into the landfill.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second to forward Resolution Number 1206 dash 0821 to the September, September seventh city council, uh, city council meeting action agenda for the, for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right. Now onto the action agenda. And we're going to have City Manager Jeff Knighton to share information about a franchise agreement with PUD III.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. The city staff and representatives of PUD III have been working on this franchise agreement for quite some time, as you all know. Uh, and this agreement benefits the citizens of Shelton, uh, protects the city's interests and, uh, it protects the individual utilities' needs. Um, the agreement grants a non-exclusive franchise to PUD III for a primary term of 10 years. And council heard this item at their August 3 regular business meeting and there have been no changes, uh, since that time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Once again, we'll pause for 30 seconds for public comment.
You get your exercise today, Donna.
Yeah. Thank you. And now we'll have the second reading of ordinance number 1963 dash 1220.
Ordinance number 1963 dash 1220, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington granting a non-exclusive franchise for the transmission, distribution and sale of electricity.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1963 dash 1220 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Just want to thank the city manager for getting us through this as the last. Um, I remember recall three years ago when we started down this journey, um, we had zero, well, I think we had one, but we had basically no franchise agreements. Uh, and, uh, thanks for seeing this through.
Yeah, this was actually one of his...
Check this one out.
One of his, one of the first things you were working on, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Right off the get-go.
Yep.
So that's been what, three, almost three years?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to thank city manager as well, tackling all of these, uh, franchise agreements that we have not had or not been adequate agreements, um, and your staff for tackling all these last couple of years.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1963 dash 1220 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Our last item this evening, presented by Community Development Director Mark Ziegler, has to do with the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Uh, once again, we're bringing you recommendations from the Shelton Arts Commission for placement in the rotating art gallery out in the Civic Center. Uh, the Shelton Arts Commission went through the process of calling for artists publicly. We had four artists submit and eight total pieces of work. Uh, and all four artists and all eight pieces are being recommended, bring forward to you today for placement starting August 31st and they would be up in the Civic Center through November 30th with your approval.
Okay. Once again, we'll pause for public comment. All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for placement in the Civic Center rotating art gallery. Second.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mark?
No.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I do.
Um, are we going to proceed with more covers, art covers for the boxes than around town?
Not, not at this point. Um, we can look at that again next year because there are a couple of the traffic boxes, but they're owned by the state, so we'd have to work through with the state of Washington to get those, uh, accomplished.
Okay. Those look great. Very good.
I love looking at these pictures. You know what would be awesome is if the art commission had some kind of a contest of people drawing something from Shelton historically or something that's here now, the bridge on, on First Street or just something like that. And then, uh, you know, the council can pick the best one and maybe the city can buy it and hang it in the lobby or something. I think that'd be kind of cool. There's, we have a lot of historical sites that somebody can paint.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they'll do that or not, but...
That's a good idea. Yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for placement in the Civic Center rotating art gallery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Let's move on to, uh, Jeff, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Uh, just a couple of things tonight. Uh, first, I wanted to mention that unfortunately, the last, uh, Timberdays event for this year is scheduled for, uh, the 20th and the 21st coming up this weekend. Uh, I say unfortunately because I'm really looking forward to it, but it's also the last one for this year.
Although, there is still, the Forest Festival festivities on September 18th, so more to look forward to.
Very true, uh, very true. Um, so looking forward to that coming up this weekend. The other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, the Chalk the Walk event that happened today. I, that was a lot of fun. Uh, many of the, uh, the team members here at the city, uh, took a walk around, some of them even did their own artwork today, uh, and everybody had a great time and I was very glad that it was in the mid-'70s and not, uh, not as hot as it has been. Uh, so that was, uh, that was an enjoyable walk around town today. Uh, those are the only two things I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I, I have had, uh, two separate people ask me about the film program that we were looking into, recycle the film bags.
So that, uh, has quieted down quite a bit. Uh, if you remember, we didn't have a start date on that because there was some, uh, uh, issues with the number of employees that were necessary and they weren't able to find those employees. However, with the new, uh, ban, uh, statewide coming into effect, uh, October 1st, I believe, um, I'm not sure of, uh, the direction that, uh, SC Johnson was going with that program. I can certainly reach out and find out if they're still planning to pursue it and let council know. Uh, my assumption would be though, with the, that ban in place, that I don't, uh, I wouldn't imagine that it would be, uh, in their interest to continue.
I had to share something. I was, I was running around pretty ragged today and I drove up Fifth Street one time and I was turning left to go up the hill, up Mountain View, and I looked to the right and there was a gal lane on the sidewalk and I went, oh gosh, I better go look and see what this is. And then I saw, as I looked again, there's a girl drawing chalk around her body. So I decided to leave it alone. Anyway, so anyway, there's no more items for discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I forget this often and I apologize for that, but I just go over here, for your looking ahead, uh, for our next meeting, our next regular business meeting on September 7th. Uh, we do have, uh, surplus property discussion on, uh, on your business agenda there along with, uh, the water comprehensive plan that will be discussed as well. Uh, and then we have the action items for the things that you heard tonight, which include the surplus vehicle, uh, updating municipal code 8.08, uh, and that type of thing. And, um, I will do my best not to forget this next time. I know I do it often, I'll try not to do it again.
Can I clarify one thing?
Yeah.
Water compliance has been moved to, like, December?
Oh.
Since the publication of our package, so...
Go ahead, Donna's here. Okay.
Can I, uh, can we discuss if we want to go back to Zoom meetings or not, or is that for another time?
Uh, I, I, I'm willing to talk about it. I, I think we need to do it if it's what's, you know, uh, recommended by Inslee, right? I mean, what's the directive going to be?
So I haven't seen anything as of yet, uh, as far as a directive. There's been encouragement, uh, coming from the governor's office, but not a, uh, not a directive. Uh, it's certainly up to council. Uh, we have the method, uh, set up, you know, we used it for what, almost a year and a half, uh, to conduct regular council business meetings. We can certainly go back to that if, uh, council feels comfortable.
What if we, uh, would, would you consult Dave Wyndham at the Mason County Board of Health?
I can.
On what he feels?
I can. I've, uh, I've seen the information coming out of, uh, the health department that encourages mask wearing for all individuals vaccinated or not.
Well, the county is having Zoom meetings as well and so are all the other cities, um, Lacey, Tumwater, Olympia are all under Zoom meetings.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of a weird format in here, but the people sitting out there and they may be coming in and all that stuff, I just thought that, you know, if we can't have a, a real council meeting, that maybe we should go back to Zooms and, until this is over. I, I think this is the same as, as kind of a Zoom, we got people out there watching us on a screen and, and then they come in and I, I just think that the Zoom would probably be better. Um, that's just my opinion.
I'll, I'll do whatever, but...
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know. It's a recommendation, not a mandate. And I, I have no concerns of being here with everyone. And I'm tired of sitting at home. It, I, I have a hard time paying attention.
You could come to my house and do yard work.
That would be great. So I'll do yard work while you're having a council meeting and come out, hey, we voted aye.
Yeah. Pushing your little wheelbarrow over there.
I really, I, I don't care one way or the other really, but I do suggest strongly that we do not do what MTA is doing and having some people at home on Zoom and some people...
Yeah.
And that is just a farce. It's just, I'm sorry to say it, but it's tough.
Yeah.
They can't hear us, we, you know, the, the, it's either their system, because they have speakers laying on the table, but not enough of them. And so it makes it really hard to make a motion because they can't hear you. So anyway, that's, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, so...
One way or the other.
I think the, the consensus that I hear from council is that, uh, that we go, uh, back to that format in, uh, for the foreseeable future, at least until we get, um, you know, we see numbers in the state going down. Uh, and I, if that's the direction we want to go, I definitely want to make sure that the public is fully aware of how we will be meeting and how they can access and comment on public agenda items, uh, so we can get that information out tomorrow.
Now, will that be for all meetings or for study sessions where the public is welcome to attend? I mean, to me, that's just us meeting, doesn't make sense to continue, but I don't know if we would not want to confuse folks by having two different methods.
Well, public can come to all of our meetings, so...
Right. There's not a dedicated component for them to interact with council in the same way that there is here. They're welcome to observe always.
They can watch.
Right.
Right. Yeah. I don't know.
So, I will, I will send an email out to each of you, uh, tomorrow morning and then individually, uh, reply to me with the direction you'd like to go and we'll make, uh, make that happen. Okay?
Okay. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned at 6:47.